I am not arguing with her. She is not on this city council.
Lower your moles.
You are arguing with her, Russell.
Buckle up for one of the most disappointing, disheartening town hall meetings in Otter Creek ever, where we thought people were starting to actually join together for the common good and for the common cause of the people. It's just more drama, more strife. In other words, the way it's always been.
This looks really good.
We have placed some agendas on the table up front if anyone would like a copy to know what we're talking about this evening. We've also put a copy of the minutes packet in the binder there where anybody can just have a look at it, so it's official, and then we'll take it.
The first thing you probably noticed is there's a new setup for the council sitting at the tables. I don't know whose idea it was, but I think it's a good idea. A good idea that they're not afraid of change, that they're willing to try new things to see if it works. Now, I don't know if it'll stay this way. I actually have my doubts that it will, because I think sound is an issue for some of the people. Remember, we've tried to use microphones, they refuse them. We've tried other aspects, they've refused it. As a matter of fact, they refuse almost everything. But here's a new setup. But here's what's not being refused. Belinda is openly giving the information out to anybody and everybody who wants it.
Four, three, two, one. Madam Mayor, it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, that's called a meeting of order. First, you wanted to start with the trailer. Is there anyone on the board who would like to lead? If not, Chris Granger, who did you want to go?
Yes, let us pray. I thank you, Lord, for looking over the town as we move forward with this new agenda. Bless all the people that are here tonight and that they're doing the right things for Otter Creek, and through Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
This is the common practice of almost every county, every town in the area. It's not unheard of. As a matter of fact, it is the norm. And I thought prayer would actually rally the people and the council members together. You're about to find out, there's that catalyst still, that contentious catalyst, Russ the Sus. Everything around him is a rival.
And going to the flag, the flag of believers.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move into roll call. Don Sorino.
Present.
Chris Granger, present. And Pageant.
Here.
And the first thing we got is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
I know what you're thinking, why did Don second it? So he could vote against it? No, that is not what you're thinking. That's what he did last time. You're thinking, why is this man still standing? Okay, you're thinking it's because he can't see the signals from Russell. I'm thinking, maybe. But what I really think it's about is hearing. This setup, while it may take away contention from arguments from people looking at each other for signals, and it's a better setup for the public viewing their actual council members, which is the norm. Most meetings you go to, they're all in one line. It's very difficult for individuals who have hearing problems to deal with.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. No creeps. And if everyone looked over their bills, can we have a motion to pay the bills?
How did we get a legal fee? As long as you get a building and zoning. If we hired an attorney without the...
No, we sought legal counsel.
Is Don the Con walking out of the meeting? And Russ wants a lawyer one meeting, and now he wants to know what's going on? Hold a second. He never told anybody anything about any of the bills, and now he has a bill in front of him. And he could have had his bills a week earlier to go through them and ask questions before the meeting, but did he? No, he didn't. Neither did Don the Con, and that's going to become an issue.
That was without approval of the council?
Yes, we did. We have, our letter said that the county commissioner of the county was ending their interlocal agreement with us on the 30th of the meeting. Therefore, therefore, we have our building and zoning department back. And because right now we need to have the construction when we need it at this point. For now, God is as you make sure we're going properly.
Here's what you missed on the other side of the tables as they were trying to figure out the configuration. For Don, first hearing on this side. Basically, in a nutshell, Russ goes, why do we have a legal fee? And Belinda goes, we have a legal fee because we had to seek legal consultation, because our interlocal agreement is severed now by the end of the month. There are things that the county provided for the town that now the town has to provide, and they had to seek out legal counsel to see how we do that. Now, Russ isn't too happy about that, but I'm not sure why. He never told anybody anything.
We have, we just looked at all the forms that we will be using, and as far as building permits, issuing them. So he came, um, he answered my questions that I have. So, so who'd come up with all that stuff? Why wasn't that discussed in an open meeting?
Because you knew we were ending it. You knew that.
I knew the, I knew the, it was, the county was ending, yes. Uh, this and here tried to end it early so he could cut out of his, uh, building permits and, uh, impact fees.
That is wrong, Russell. I'm not gonna, I guess, because I didn't...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not arguing with you, no.
No, you're not.
Doug, Doug.
Go ahead, Doug. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Doug, Doug.
I am not arguing with her. She is not on this city council.
Lower your moles.
You are arguing with her, Russell.
Has to raise his voice so no one can hear what's going on.
Everybody's in here.
You never do. That's a problem.
Within the first couple minutes of the meeting, here we go, it's on, like Donkey Kong. Russell raising his voice, being disrespectful yet again to Belinda. Now, from what I can see, Russell picks on elderly women. That's what others would say about other individuals in the town, and that's all I've seen so far, is Russ the Sus picks on elderly women. And then you've got Doug. That's my Doug, baby, that's my Doug. He has every right to stand up and to protect his wife, Belinda. Every right in the world. And Russ then agging him on, come on, throw it, throw it. Then you have Doug's son and Belinda holding Doug back. Then you've got Joyce, one of the Hudson girls, coming into the middle, holding Doug back as well. Joyce, I just, Joyce, save yourself, please. I mean, this is, this is Otter Creek. This has been Otter Creek, and Otter Creek doesn't want to change? Why would Otter Creek not want to be better? You realize what the common denominator is for this town, right? It's not a YouTuber moved in and bought up a bunch of land. It's not that there's cameras everywhere. This is the way it's always been. The common denominator is Russell Meeks Sr.
Okay, we sought legal counsel because of the situation with you and everybody else. We sent a letter to the Department of Building and Zoning saying, okay, until August 15th, we would do our thing. Yes, we sent it to the wrong department, and we inadvertently didn't. Okay, we sought legal counsel who said it was immaterial. We sent the letter to the wrong department. Yet I apologize to everybody, I did, I made a mistake. But I said, okay, let's fix it. And I did. The agreement was the board of county commissioner and us, not the building and zoning department.
But regardless, though, he did break the code of ethics.
I think we did.
There's a lot of meat to unpack here in this conversation. So what's really happening is Zim sent a letter to the county. There was an interlocal agreement for services that the town needed, and the county was severing those services. Zim wrote a letter and said, we're gonna sever them early. We don't need you anymore. But there was nothing in place for the town. So there are people in the town saying he had a hidden agenda. Now, I gotta be very clear, I'm not for Vice Mayor Zim. I'm not for anybody else on the council. I'm for Otter Creek as a whole. The residents, the town need to grow and need to be better. I have no agenda. If somebody else does, well, it's gonna be fleshed out, and it's gonna be shown. Did it look like he had an agenda? Absolutely. But now you've got council member Gail who's saying, well, he, regardless, he broke the code of ethics. Gail had an agenda as well to expose that. So later in the meeting, you're gonna hear a written statement, and Gail's gonna talk about the horrific aspects of being filmed in Otter Creek and warn that this could be your town next. But yet, Gail took the information to another person making videos and posts on YouTube and utilized that person to get that information out there. So YouTube is okay in that aspect, but she's warning that it could happen to your town. It's hypocrisy is what it is. By the way, I love Gail. She's my neighbor. I get along great with her. I don't have to agree with everything with her. I like Zim. I get along with him. I don't have to agree with everything, but I can still be friends with them. That's what maturity is. We don't have to block each other on Facebook because we don't agree on everything. What I do agree is Gail and Zim and Belinda all have the best interests of the town in mind. I don't want to see hidden agendas. I think everything should be shown transparently and communicated with and talked about. And if that can't happen, unincorporate. Who needs the fighting? Who needs the feuds? Who needs any of this?
But we all acknowledge that. And I'm sorry, I mean, all we can do is go forward. We did, we got all the, all the, um, applications were reviewed by legal counsel that said, yes, we should change, we need the brought to safe format, and we're going forward with that. Now, as far as Zim's project, Zim is not, will not have, not interfere. Will he have anything to do with touching that paperwork that comes in this office? It will be, um, the building inspector will become, for him, to me, I will review it as upon his approval, and we will go forward. I have a list, and I don't care if he walks through that door, they will all be treated the same.
I'm not up to speed on everything they're talking about right now. Remember, I've been in Ohio. I'm not there yet. What I do know is Russell doesn't like Zim, and Russell has kept Zim from building in the past, for years in the past. When Zim already had a permit to move forward, Russell's blocked it. That's not the only person Russell has done that to. Now, I also understand that Vice Mayor Zim sent a letter to the county early or had Belinda send a letter, and she sent it to the wrong department in the county. Well, none of that really matters anymore because time's elapsed on that interlocal agreement anyway. But Gail's not happy about it, going, hey, this is corrupt. I thought we were a new council.
If Zim is aware that he's already been told, he can't touch anything on his project because of self-serving and a conflict of interest. Therefore, he's just, he has, he's going through the steps just like anybody else. And I'm making sure that the people that are issuing these permits are the proper people who are giving them, and they're properly handled.
So you've already hired a building and zoning official without approval from the council?
It's on the agenda for tonight, if you write your agenda.
No, Russ the Sus, that would have been you who was hiring people without anybody knowing or telling the council. Not to mention, you had a week to go over this agenda. People of Otter Creek, this is where your money is going. To an individual, to a council member who is not doing what you voted him to do.
Yes, and legal counsel, Norm Fugit said, you are able to hire your own building inspector as long as they turn their credentials into us, and we can see that, yes, they are certified building inspector. We don't have to use our own. Zim chose that, but the person that he chose is the one that he has recognized, that we have references to hire, and it was backed by Norm Fugit, because he is also the attorney for Sutcliffe, and he's aware of Jack's reputation. So we have gone forward with his building, his permits, one step at a time. I have everything that I need and what was supposed to be in that box. Now, tonight, we will decide the funding agenda, the one that we're going to hire for us.
I'm not in favor of hiring nobody until we get an attorney sitting right there so we can get legal with him.
Noted. Now, listen, if anybody bothered to read the cancellation of the interlocal agreement from the county, it still states that the impact fees and assessments will be collected by the county, because once we do our permitting, it gets forwarded to the county, so nobody can bypass any of that. There's no hokey business going on. It says so right here in the letter of cancellation.
Ironic that Russ the Sus wants a lawyer, but it's Russ the Sus that got the town into a lawsuit in the first place. And no local lawyer will touch the town. Why? Because they know all about Russ the Sus. They know the reputation of Otter Creek and the corruption that comes with Russ the Sus. No lawyer in their right mind is gonna represent a circus and a show, and it has nothing to do with cameras, it has nothing to do with YouTubers. It has everything to do with people in the town going, well, this is the way it always was, and this is the way we want it, because this is the way it always is, and it always will be, and it will never change. No, that's not okay. There are so many things in life that always were, such as slavery, such as women's lack of rights to vote. We could go on and on and on. They weren't okay. They were never okay. Otter Creek is not okay, and that's why a lawyer won't touch them.
Well, why didn't we get that information?
You would have to ask Mr. Meeks and Mary, why they didn't give you that information.
What do you have there?
The same letter that...
The same letter we found.
We took off this.
This, the letter came in last...
Okay, well, you wrote a letter to the county, uh...
All the same way.
Okay, well, why didn't we get that letter? You know, all this stuff is being done, you've got to be transparent, but you're really being invisible. That's the problem for all this stuff.
I made an error, and I apologize, and I did what I needed to do to fix it.
Well, errors happen, we all realize that, but you can't keep us in the dark like this. Of course we are, we get all this stuff here, it should have been emailed to us or something.
So previous meetings, Don doesn't want email, doesn't do email, neither does Russ the Sus. This meeting, now Don the Con wants email? How, how does anybody, how does anybody want to serve on this council? It is literally geriatric babysitting, and it is not okay by any stretch of the imagination. Competent people with understanding and wisdom and knowledge should be serving and representing this town.
All this information today, how are we supposed to assess all that stuff, you know? Comment here and you give it... No, you sent me an agenda, and maybe...
That whole packet was emailed to everybody, yes, sir.
No, don't check.
I can check, because I was copying in on the email that has your name, that has his name, that has his name, that has her name. We are all copied in on the same email that had the whole packet.
And you were also told...
And you can come and pick it up if you choose to, but you choose not to.
I thought there would be more coming with this stuff.
You bring this up every meeting, and you don't get your permission. You'd have been told several times that your package would be here available for you a week in advance.
She said, right, everything is gonna be emailed to everybody.
And it was.
It was.
But it was also built, you can pick up in here as well.
I got two emails concerning tonight's meeting, and none of this stuff was in it. There's this and, and the, and the financial reports, that's it.
The agenda was the only thing that was on my email.
Then something's not right, and we are being kept in the dark.
No, sir.
Why would I say that?
If you feel that way, why don't you come down here and pick it up?
Because I, you said you were going to send them...
You cared on about it. You said you wanted to come down here and pick it up. Nobody's locking you out of anything to keep you away from anything. All you have to do is either open your email or come pick it up, period.
Well, there was somebody locking Don out. It was Mary Mary, "Locks are scary. Don the Con is scary," under Russ the Sus's authority. We've already gone over that in one of the 6,000 emails. Belinda, if you're watching, I think you should purposely put a copy of that email in Don's packet for next month. I'll pay the charges for the copy.
Nobody's hand-delivering it. We've already established that.
That's something I'm asking for. I got the emails, and I figured that's complete. I come in here, and you got all this other stuff that, no idea it was gonna be up here tonight, you know? This is, this is what I got, I wanted the financial reviews. We shouldn't have this, this kind of argument, you know?
Exactly.
Well, okay, why? Okay, listen.
Did Gail get hers in the email?
I got mine, but it was in two different, it was in one, but two different things I had to open to get it. So that might be what the, could be the problem, not open both attachments.
So he doesn't know how to operate.
So I got one email with two attachments.
You're on the youngins, they can open your computer and get it.
You know, so...
Okay, so I think we're asking for the motion to pay the bills.
To approve the agenda, and we did the agenda, now the bills, yes.
I made a motion to pay the bills.
Belinda's coming out of the office with copies. It's paperwork. It's what she emailed them. Proof that nothing has been hidden. They all got everything.
Okay, do we have a second to pay the bills?
A second to pay the bills.
All right, we have a second. All in, all in favor to pay the bills?
The packet one, was that one okay?
All in favor to pay the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay. Russell opposed, all the rest in favor, motion carries.
Anybody want to place bets on whether Russell votes yes for anything during this meeting?
I'll bet you $50 it'll pass any, any test you put it through.
Okay, Don, I'll take your bet.
Okay, then we have an approval of the minutes from September 6th, 12th, and 18th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I hear a second to approve the minutes?
A second.
All right, we have a second to approve the minutes. All in favor to approve the minutes, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, Russell opposed, motion carries.
He's 2-0. Maybe we should make a new game. Don the Con has to take a sip of Otter Creek water every time Russ the Sus votes no.
Now, we're in the public participation. Our members of the public will have three minutes to speak to the council on any one topic. Please remember that the topic needs to pertain to the town, and it needs to be respectful with no foul language.
So I can do that too, right?
What?
Say what I gotta say, and that's three minutes.
For, you can say it as a, as a part of you can.
Yeah, everybody will get a chance to talk, whether you're on the board or in the public. Did anybody in the public have anything they would like to address the board with? Yes, sir?
I was just a land clearing over here, and I have some property right next to it, and the level of the ground has been lifted, and it's turned about to run off on my property. I also was looking for a, um, a building permit of some sort. I didn't see a box out there or any type of building permit or anything. I talked to Zim last month, and I asked about a building permit, and he explained to me that it was something that was sold a long time ago, and somebody in my family knew about it. Well, I called everybody that I knew that might know about it, and nobody knows about it. So I would like to request a copy of that building permit and have it posted as it should be, uh, and any, any other information pertaining to that property or the construction thereof.
This is the awkward triangle of land right here that's being questioned. Zim's land is over here, and this awkward triangle comes in here. Now, when you're on the property appraiser's site, these lines are not exact by any stretch of the imagination. They're never exact, they're never right. You have to get a survey to know exactly where they are.
Well, I agree about the runoff, because I let my nephew put a trailer beside me, and I flood.
So, um, I don't know how this addressing period works, what I'm supposed to do there, but I'm asking for that. Is there a way that I could request it officially, and then have it put in the record that I'm requesting?
It's listed.
Okay, it's in the record?
It's all up in the internet now.
Okay, not concerned by internet, I'm just concerned about the property out here.
Public record.
So I formally request a copy of the building permit, and all that is pertaining to it, like the plaque and all of that stuff.
Does Belinda have any of your information? If not, get with her after the meeting, so we can get your information.
And I'll give you the feeds for what's the topic of the call.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Was there anybody else? All right, now we can move on to the old business. The first thing we have on the old business is the hiring for the clerk position. We had the workshop, and I was here, Zim was here, and Gail was here.
For two men who complain about everything going on in the town, you'd think they would actually get involved to make a difference and actually attend the workshops. Again, they're only coming to get that $100 a month.
And going through the applications, there was no one in there qualified. Belinda did put in a resume to be interim clerk until the day arises that we find someone who is qualified. So everybody decided they would like to go with her to fill the position on an interim basis until we find someone qualified, rather than just throwing in a warm body, which I advise against.
But wait, isn't Belinda already the town clerk? No, she's not. She's the town bookkeeper. What they've done is taken the part-time clerk position, which is part-time, and they've split it into two other part-time positions. That helps with accountability, that helps with stewardship. But now Belinda's gonna take the other half, so she's got the bookkeeping, she's gonna take the other half of the clerking, and she's gonna hold on to that because she's competent in that area until they can find somebody who can fill it.
So, do I hear a motion to hire Belinda on an interim basis?
I'll make a motion to hire her.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries. Belinda's hired for the interim clerk.
For those keeping track, that's three no's for Russell, and Don jumped in on that one as well and said, uh-uh.
And for the attorney position, it's just basically a status update. We did run an ad on the internet, and in the paper, we did have one gentleman who put in a resume, and then he pulled his resume, so he doesn't want to be part of it, but his fees were quite high anyway. He wanted $3,000 a month retainer fee, as well as us to pay for a hotel room for him to stay here for the night when we had meetings and paid his mileage from Jacksonville. So I doubt that would have been a great contender anyway. So we're still looking for an attorney. If anybody knows of any attorney who would like to represent us, please give the information to them.
They're scared of this conundrum.
I know, everybody's pretty much.
And now with our new business, Tammy Jones sent over interlocal agreement for the elections. Did everybody look that over? We just need to sign that agreement. Basically, the same thing they did for the last elections, where they oversee everything. They have the canvassing board, they do the training, which the training starts in November. And I know there are some...
The training for the poll workers?
Yeah, for the whole, all the election stuff, for the clerks, for the poll workers. And there'll be new filing requirements this year for any candidates where they're doing the filing, the financial filing will be done electronically, and they'll be requiring more information, where before it was just a quick, simple form. Now it's gonna be electronically, and they really wanna know a lot more details about your financial information than before. So that's a new requirement going into play.
Why would the elections board want more of your financial information? It's all about financial stewardship and accountability. In other words, to make sure nobody is apt to steal from the municipality. So for example, if you're an individual living illegally in a shed and creating GoFundMes for everything and anything in the world, that is not a person that should be running for a council position. That's a person that can't be trusted with funds, and the election board is gonna filter it out by looking at all of your finances, all of it.
While, while we continue.
And that's just a side note, besides the interlocal agreement, that there'll be that new, um, filing requirement. But you'll get more information when the candidate stuff, which is usually, I believe, in January, February-ish, where that comes out, where people can run and get all their op... where that comes out, where people can run and get all their paperwork.
That time period is coming up pretty soon.
Right.
And we really haven't resolved the problem with the three-way tie.
As far as assigning seats?
As far as who's gonna work that one... One-year term.
Oh, yeah, we've resolved that, all right.
No, we haven't.
We sure did.
How?
It got assigned.
Pardon?
It got assigned to Russell Meeks. We're past that.
I'm sorry, but you don't have that authority to do that. Pardon?
I disagree, and we're past that.
Don wants to say Madam Mayor Therese doesn't have the authority. I'm curious who gave Don the authority to claim that she doesn't have the authority? Where'd his authority come from?
So what's gonna happen? It's gonna come up whenever, and there's gonna be a problem with that because...
There's not.
You... You can't do that. You should... You know that. Everybody here knows that you don't have that authority, especially since you were one of the three people at that tide.
Anyway, we're past that. So right now, we're talking about the election requests.
Well, it's gonna cause a big problem come election. Big problem.
It's no problem. So now we're talking about the interlocal agreement with Tammy Jones. So if everybody read through the packet, this needs to be approved and signed to get back to her. So do I hear a motion that we sign the interlocal agreement with Tammy Jones?
Motion to have Tammy Jones.
Okay, do I have a second to go with Tammy Jones?
We haven't seen this. How can we...
This is to do the elections, the same as you do every year here. And Tammy Jones is the supervisor of elections. She handles the elections. Do you have someone else to go with besides the supervisor of elections?
He's just being difficult for the sake of being difficult. Legally, you have to have elections. Legally, you have to go with the supervisor of elections, Tammy Jones. There is nobody else that can oversight their elections, that I'm aware of. Maybe Don's got somebody. There is nobody else. Wait and see what Russ and Don do this time. You understand, this is just a formality vote. It's a rubber stamp thing that has to be done. It has to legally be in the agenda for it to be official. It's really something they've done every single year. Russ has done it. Don has done it. It's a rubber stamp. It has to be done. That's just like approving the agenda. Has to be done. It's like approving the minutes. Has to be done. The elections. Has to be done. But they have to be difficult.
Pardon?
Is there someone else to go with besides the supervisor of elections?
No, there's not.
Okay.
But before I voted, so now I kinda like know what I'm voting for.
Once again, I can't help that you don't open your attachments. I can't do anything about that.
If that was the case, I would... I would say, "Okay," but that's not the case.
Don, I gave you proof that it went. I showed you the copy of the email where it was sent, and the attachment that I just handed to you was the one that was sent with your email. So other than the agenda, you got all of the paperwork.
Well...
I did... What I handed you was the same thing that was attached to the email.
I certainly hope so. When I opened up both those attachments and was not there...
And when we're done with this...
Well, I'll check it when I get home. I don't wanna argue about it, you know?
When you come into my office, and I will sit you in my chair, and I'm gonna show you. So you can see, here's the email that was sent, and here's the attachment.
Well, let me open them. Let me go for the, you know? I'm not trying to be in...
If you're gonna sit there and say you didn't get it, then let me show you. Let me show you.
You just... You gave me these.
But I gave... I sent them Thursday. That's what I'm saying. You've got it in plenty of time. You had it Thursday evening. You had it all day Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Monday.
Okay.
And all day today.
Okay, all right. Well, listen, I opened up both of them. It wasn't there. I could've made a mistake. I'm gonna check on that.
I appreciate that, if you would. But in the meantime, if you need to, we will sit down, and I'll let you open it so you can see what's sent.
God bless Belinda. Uh, God's blessed Otter Creek with Belinda. The ability that she can just say, "Come on, come into the office, sit down, we'll go through it." I couldn't do it. I honestly could not do it. I can't. I don't have it in me. And yet, God has poured all this grace in her heart to be able to do that with individuals. We need her.
Okay.
Well, I... I said I would double-check that, and if I'm wrong, I could certainly admit that I'm wrong. But, uh, I looked, and it was not much here, other than this and the, uh... And the financial reports.
Like I said, my chair's always open. You come in, you sit down, and I'll let you open it so you can see. So you will be able to see it right there.
Well, probably I thought I'll have to start doing this. Must be some malfunction somewhere.
Some... Okay, well, just so that you know, it is open.
Well, uh... You mean the door's open?
The door's open. And I'll... You can come sit down in my chair, and I'll let you open the email that was sent so you yourself can scroll down and see all the documents. Because I... Once it's sent, I can't change it. So you'll know that what was sent was the whole package.
I will know.
You got it all, I can't help it.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay, so moving on, we do have a motion.